Good evening all. I think we're going to call this planning commission meeting to order for October 9. And I think we will go straight to Holly for presentations and informal reports.
Sounds like a good plan. Thank you for your attendance tonight and Holly Owen, Community Development Director for the city. Tonight, we will be workshopping what is not only a requirement by the state, but potentially an opportunity for us to consider design in a deeper way than we have perhaps in the in the past. We have some guidelines and some homework and my intent is that we we review some information tonight and take questions and discuss a little bit, not in a lot of depth, because I think I'd like to have some time for everybody to absorb is what we're what we're looking at in terms of a task. So thank you. Let me just see how I okay, thanks. Some of these, and by the way, just a disclaimer, some of these photos, you will recognize some of these. You'll say, where are the where is this anyway? So that was internet grabs. So you will you will see some of them at least as we go on. So can we move that just up a little bit? Thank you. Yeah, that's a perfect place for it actually. So tonight, we're going to be talking about multifamily objective design standards. There's a reason that we're concentrating just on multifamily tonight. There's a reason why we're doing this now. We'll be looking a little bit at objective design standards creation and then we'll have just a little bit of time for discussion too. So here's here's our He's right here. Yes. Good. Thank you. We'll talk again then, right? Okay. Thank you. So the why are we doing these these design standards at this time? Part of this is, as usual, it's the the state and they have become increasingly involved in any manner of issues regarding housing. We have a reason to do this at this time. And these are there are actually a number of reasons, but some of the primary reasons is that we want to be able to establish some measures and requirements for multifamily development that projects that may come to the city for consideration. And this is the this is really the legal way to do this. This is the enforceable way to do this. It's backed up by one of our housing element programs and we can comply with with state law by doing that too. But there's some advantages for us too, as we'll get into. So we have a number of programs in the housing element, I believe. And when I looked at the spreadsheet today, I think there's 144. That's a lot of programs. But some of these are countywide programs. Some of these are specific to Kingsburg. Some of these are on the to-do lists that have already been to done, so we don't have to worry about it. But one of the one of the requirements is that we develop design standards, design guidelines, they call it here, but design standards and remove subjective standards and place put into place some standards that will keep keep a sort of a vetted list of things that we can require with projects that come in. They talk about this as being for the Swedish village, but I think really that intention was throughout the city because when you look at where our multifamily is mostly zoned, it's outside the form-based code area. If you haven't had time to look at your form-based code, it might be a good time to to crack this open. I think you were given this when you first came to Planning Commission. It's available online for anybody who wants to to see it. It's a it's a lengthy document. There's a lot of standards in it and some of those would certainly qualify for objective standards. But the Housing and Community Development, the state, did look at our form-based code and decided that it was not not a concern, not a constraint to housing. So that's very good news for the projects that come within that that area. And many of the the design elements are in here are very helpful for that and they've been and they have been followed too. So that's really an additional resource we have for us to look at. But you know that what we want to be able to do is to apply design standards to projects that come in to the areas that are that are zoned multifamily that are outside the area. You know what I'm talking about? Parcels that are north of Sierra and there's some parcels in the southwest. And so we as as projects are proposed, it is it's very helpful to us and and to the applicants to have a list of things that they can look at and know that that's really what we expect. This I will certainly not go into all this of what what the what legislation has has brought us to this point. But let's just say that Senate Bill 35 was a was a big one. It it basically did a lot of streamlining of of projects. The intent is a concern over housing supply and housing affordability. They want to be able to remove obstacles to to creating housing. And so when you look at what is allowed by the local jurisdictions, time and time again, you'll see these, you know, the the reference to these objective design standards. So that's that's really where where we're at now. And it's we're in a good position to be looking at what has been done with other jurisdictions and then moving on to what we would like to see. Objective means objective. It's a design standard that involves no personal or subjective judgment. It can be measurable in a in a number of ways. It's verifiable and it's a transparent list. We we know what what it says. Developers know what it says. It can ideally, you know, make requirements more predictable for for everybody. And it is the only basis that we have really to reduce proposed density that we might not really want to see. We don't feel like it would be it would allow for the amenities maybe that we want to see in a multifamily development. But we we would have that to back up that that requirement. So it can include portions of general plans, specific plans. You know, we have the North Kingsburg specific plan. We have we have the Form Based Code downtown. So there's, you know, there's there's plenty of opportunity to sort of overlap that too. Again, this is what why did why we have the advantages or remove some ambiguity between projects in the same vicinity and then promotes that consistency and reasonable expectations for for everybody, hopefully. So when you look at design standards, that's that's that means one thing and design guidelines can mean another. You will find that in the last 20 years, 30 years, many communities that wanted to create a sort of a unified messaging of how housing or commercial development should look, they developed a set of design guidelines. And it was always a separate little booklet that you could often it was accompanied by a board of review or architectural board of review or design review committee or something like that. And they would they would know, they would look in it and say, okay, this is what we, you know, this is what we we could require. Could, should, may require. A lot of the times that the language in a design guidelines book was was not as strong as as it could be, not not as easily enforceable. So and sometimes it was open to interpretation. So ideally, the design standards is more specific and also much more clear in what in the use of language. The use is shall and must. You know, you are required to do this with your, you know, with your HVAC units and multifamily. They need to be located here and not just anywhere, that kind of thing. So there's an example there of something that happens a lot, I think, in communities. Like when I worked for the County of Santa Barbara, we had projects that would be denied because after a lot of neighborhood opposition, it would be determined that the use that was being proposed was not consistent with the character of the neighborhood. Well, the reality is in a court of law, you know, you're gonna you're gonna spend a lot of time arguing about what that what that actually means. What's the character? What's the neighborhood? What's, you know, is it a good idea? Are people upset about change? Sure they are. But you know, at what point do you say, well, how can we how can we require a project, you know, to be compatible with a neighborhood in certain ways? Is it a setback? You know, is it the color of the building? What? You know, so so being more specific in the in that way will help everybody and ideally take her take that take some of those contentious conversations to a lower a lower temperature. So. So here's an example of some language that could be used in the on the left-hand side. It's it's subjective. And on the right-hand side, you see what would be you would want to draft in its place or address if you've never addressed it at all. And I think in in many cases for multifamily projects, it's been it's been the latter. You haven't. We haven't really addressed articulation. And I and I had to learn some of this language. I was not trained as a as an architect. So massing, fenestration, articulation, that's all kind of a language I have to keep looking up in in the definition. So I understand what it what it means. But some of the concepts are pretty important. So you know, articulation is, for instance, is just the breaking up of a solid plane that that a building might have. You know, you might recess the windows. You might pop out of the balcony a little bit. You might add a, you know, a wall that, you know, a little pony wall or something. So this is the this is what our articulation means. But to be more specific, you know, if you look at that design standard, I mean, that's pretty that's pretty specific, right? For every 100 feet of building length, there'll be a plane break along the facade. Do you want to get that specific? Oh, maybe. You know, it really it really depends on on how deep you want to go with with your design standards. But just saying provide articulation, you know, that can really be up for for interpretation. Rooftop mechanical equipment, like I mentioned before, if you say, well, it really should be screened, it's kind of ugly, you know. But if you say shall, then that's what that's what's going to be required. Same with the the example of the of the sidewalk here, pathways and walks, universal access. Well, maybe in AJ's world, that has a definition, but I think for the layperson, they they like to see it, you know, a nice hard number. So they know what they're what they're faced with and what what can be expected. So it doesn't need to all be 100 feet, eight feet, you know, that kind of thing. It doesn't have to be numeric necessarily. It can be a different kind of of layout or expectation. It can be even like a scorecard or a checklist. A lot of jurisdictions are just are taking their own comfortable take on what what that would look like. I would say that one of the one of the hopes I have for objective standards would be that there would be some graphics involved in it. And there's if you look at our form-based code, there's a lot. It's graphically rich. I mean, there are a lot of line drawings in there. And I think people have a sense of comfort when they can see an illustration, whether it's a photo or, you know, something that can be updated over time. But I think that really is helpful to illustrate just what what is expected. It doesn't need to be just multifamily residential either. One of the one of the goals I have is to get some ADU design standards together. For Kingsburg, we've had a lot of a lot of garage conversions for ADUs. So maybe a design standard for ADUs has not been quite as relevant as it could be in the future. But I think consideration of material that matches the primary house, you know, in terms of siding or stucco or whatever, would be appropriate, matching the roof materials, if it's shingle or if it's tile or, you know, whatever whatever the primary is. If you're going to have a have an ADU, it would be, I think, for design standards, requiring it to to as close as possible match the 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 primary residences is a is a good design idea and it will hold its value too. I think we'd like to avoid tough sheds in the backyard and have that be our, you know, ADU. Right, right? So I I don't, you know, that's a that's a future conversation. I I will not leave it to, you know, to too long. But at this point, that's our our plan is to look at multifamily residential. I think that has the highest need to have something on the books in case some a big project comes in. I think it's somewhat unlikely in the Central Valley that somebody comes in and really has no interest in making an attractive design. But you never know. You don't you don't know what they're, you know, this is this is for our make the case that somehow the project isn't isn't feasible if they if they are required to do that. I I don't know of that as as a situation right now. So I don't, we don't get a lot of density bonus law requests at all. I'm considering one right now and it doesn't, they aren't even, they're usually looking for things like we want to we want to waive the requirement for undergrounding, you know, the line on 10th or whatever. They'll they'll they want something that that has to do usually with, you know, with infrastructure or landscaping requirements. So. So when you're looking at what would will stay the same, I think we've talked a little bit about this in terms of the Form Based Code will stay, that we can still do discretionary review process where that's allowed. If there's a planned unit development that comes to Planning Commission or CUP, you know, that that is that's still some of those development standards can development standards can still apply. But what's up for discussion is more the by right multifamily development, which is maybe a project that doesn't, you know, doesn't require a planned unit development or a CUP. So we want to make sure that we have something in place for that, too. So what do we want to avoid? This is not to point fingers at anything in particular. I think before we, I'll show you a few photos, but I want to just say, here's a list of what we really want to avoid with not having, you know, objective design standards in place. I think that when you look at American design, the history of that, there was a time just after World War II, through the 1990s, where multifamily apartments were something like this. I lived in some of them myself as a young person. Though, that was the model of multifamily. There really wasn't any, there wasn't a lot of creativity, I think, going on with that genre at that time. It was sort of like, this was good enough. And I think they were housing a lot of young people from, you know, just demographically, there were a lot of late boomers and a lot of demand for housing. So what we got is what we got. What you see here is, you know, that you don't see any articulation or massing. It's just, you know, flat planes and kind of little porches, and that's it. Ideally with objective design standards, we'll, you know, we'll have a better product that will last, last the sort of the test of time. Here's a slide for definitions. I may send this or post this online so people can see what this, you know, if you sort of forget what these definitions mean, you can look that up and see what we can consider. I want to call out a few of these, a few of these features. You can actually see, for instance, the articulation. There's some faux balconies on the side here, and then it looks like perhaps even real balconies on the front, although that's hard to tell. The windows are inset to create a little bit of visual interest. The awnings, you know, are another feature. And this is, you know, this is something that is obviously very, you know, it's a very attractive building. This is a good example of what all these, how you break this down a bit. I think this is a building that illustrates sort of a newer approach to multifamily housing. You'll see different colors. You'll see a different way of arranging the windows. Rooftops, roof lines are varied. I will say that this is probably not, you won't see this particular building with windows like that west-facing in the Central Valley, because you would quickly roast. But I think, you know, that's all in putting that design together on a property, and hopefully you have that kind of opportunity with applicants that come in and you can work with them. But it's an example of how to, you know, how to break down the language of this, because really, we have the opportunity to do that now. And we're starting with multifamily because that's required, not only required, but our stronger need. So this is another example just of what, you know, you have variation in facade and articulation. I think you, one thing I've noticed in commercial development in the Kingsburg Business Park recently is that you have this mix of materials. There's a couple of buildings out there that are, that they have, you know, one thing going on one end of the building and another type of material treatment on the other. There's some staggering of the articulation going on there, and it's visually interesting. So that's a good example of that, too. So I wanted to just mention just some meeting times. I'll take some time, I think, at this point to answer any questions you might have, but then we can go on to future agenda items, and I'll lay out sort of what we might do and where we're at, at this point, with this task. So, thank you.
Got a question, just in the fact that I know we don't have to go all the way down the rabbit hole on it, but I know that we were talking ADUs and having a design that was basically ready make, ready bake.
Yes.
That had to be approved. Is these type of objectives something, like I think you nailed it on the head with the, can you list if the house in the front is an asphalt roof? Can that ADU that we have that is pre-designed, can it be listed as an objective that that house roof could match? Or do we have to have a one-size-fits-all type building? Can there be modifications to the building based upon the structure that it's mated to?
So you're saying that, for instance, an asphalt roof might or might not be appropriate for an ADU?
For a Spanish-style tile house.
Right, right. I think that's a question that we will consider. I know the plans had, you know, they had different treatments. I don't think the siding was actually called up, but luckily AJ is here to perhaps give a little insight into that. We can, I think we have to be realistic about what we've already approved, but I would like to see us get at least a handful of objective standards that we could apply to ADUs. And there will always be things that we haven't, we haven't thought about. So I'll just, I will pass the mic here to AJ and see if he's got any comments on that.
AJ O'Connell, Building Official. Yeah, I mean, that's certainly something, you know, should they commission and, you know, going through the process, that's certainly something that we could add. I mean, if you really take more of a 35,000-foot view of it, we're already governing ADU development under certain objective standards that are outlined in the zoning code, such as setbacks. When we issue a building permit for those pre-approved plans, they have to abide those standards. Those are objective standards. We go out, we measure it, five feet, that's what it is. This would be very similar to that. It would just be a condition of the approval. Yeah, we're going to issue you a building permit for these pre-approved plans. Now, and you have to meet the setback requirements. You have to meet the requirements for roof material. You have to meet the requirements for exterior cladding. You have to meet the requirements for any objective standard. Yep.
Sure. Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, I may just segue at this point into future agenda items only because I'd like to at least let you know that we have a fairly full calendar coming up, but we will be keeping this front and center in our priority list. We have a meeting on November 13th. This is a meeting that's required for allocations to be considered and granted, so I wanted to make sure as we get towards that rather busy holiday time that you keep that in mind. We also have a potential, we have a subdivision map that may be ready at that point to be considered with a planned unit development and track map. That's the one on Sixth and Cam that is by Joseph Crown. I think he may have come earlier to Planning Commission. And December 11th meeting will be the general plan update. That's been a two-year, two-plus-year work in progress. The consultants will be here. They will, you will be able to have plenty of fun reading before that meeting and then ask questions and make a recommendation to council after that. So my thought is that that's, those are two pretty heavy lifts. We probably want to put this multifamily objective standards to the next available meeting, which would be January 8th. I have obtained a couple of different resources that are helpful. We have a circuit planning group that works through Fresno Council of Governments. I asked them a couple of months ago to see if they had any, anything they could dig up on multifamily objective design standards. They, thank you, they put together a rough draft, and we can walk our way through that to see if there are changes that we want, if they're on the right track in terms of selecting types of architectural styles, for instance. I think they had four of them. And we also have a handbook that was done by another consulting firm, and luckily, none of this we needed to pay for. That is with, from Fresno Council of Governments. So those will be the materials that would be very useful for us to all review before that meeting. So when we get to the meeting, we can, we can maybe, you know, ask some questions that come up from that review and move on. So that's the schedule that I want to at least let you know about, and that's the expectation for, my expectation at this point, anyway, for moving forward with this process. It is a, it's, you know, not only is it required for us to do, but I actually think of it as a good thing. It's just going to take some design work on our parts to, you know, make some calls as to what we require. It will be a living document. It's not going to be part of our ordinance. It will be separate, but passed by resolution, so it will have authority, but it will not necessarily be in our ordinance, which makes it a little more flexible to change over time, because these are, these are items that do change over time. As I, we look at future agenda items, I just wanted to give you an update on some projects, too, because as you say, there've been, you saw Union 76 had some walls up, so they're progressing. I wanted to let you know that Swedish Mill is progressing also internally, even though you don't necessarily get that impression when you drive by, but they have a, their interior work is rounding the corners, being finished, and they should start on their grading and parking plan very soon and next to your landscaping. We have Sinclair Gas Station, which I believe I've mentioned to you is, it is a, they have a permit for their second building that fronts Simpson. It is, conceptually, it's a drive-through. We don't know who's going to be driving through for what yet, but they have, they have a permit for that, and they're finishing final changes to their plan for their building permit for their demolition and rebuild. So we should see some things very soon on that. The Aragón Building, El Portillo out at the Kingsburg Business Park and West Star Construction headquarters there, they're all finishing design elements and rounding the corner to completion. They have some corrections, all of them, to address, but I think that you will see some of that come along soon. Next door in Morgan's Flooring, I don't know if you've noticed, but there's a temporary certificate of occupancy that we have granted for a retail store that's going to be opening just for the holidays. They plan to see how that goes. It was a, the store that was up in Fresno and is relocating to Kingsburg. Should be retail and, at this point, I think, holiday in nature, so. You may have noticed that the Wavo site over by the TavCam Hotel and the dog park, pet park, the dog park, that's now vacant. They've moved on, and that leaves that site for hopefully some future opportunities. And Quick Corner is working on some underground utilities issues. We anticipate that that continues to progress. That concludes my comments, and if you've got any questions, you can always email me, ask me now, ask me later, I'm available. Yes, they are, they have, they have plans in. We're working on some final details on development agreements right now. We need to also find out where they might be on their tax credit application, because these things tend to be very cyclical, and we don't really know where they are in the cycle, so we're reaching out to them to get some clarification on that as to when they think they might be ready to go. Yeah, that's a parcel map. The parcel map will be coming to council in November, first meeting in November. There's no, as far as I know, there's no plans for development on that parcel. They're mapping it, so we'll see what happens with that. Any other questions? Yes, I do know what you mean. And the answer to that is, that depends. Depends on the size of the property. It depends on if there are adjacent parks, bigger parks that may serve that purpose. That's something that we always do consider, though. We are undergoing a revision of our Parks Master Plan now, too. I don't think the actual standards are changing much, if anything in terms of park requirements, but maybe amenities will change, and that might be something that would be useful to follow. And the Community Services Department is handling that. They're working with some consultants out of Fresno State, so. So if anything will change on that, it would probably come through them at this point.
Well, I guess I can probably move us along. First off, Holly, thank you for that presentation. And I think we can go to the adjournment of the Planning Commission meeting. Do I need to do all in favor? Are we good to go? All right, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.